Ones in front of the design studio, the ones in front of the design studio still say, you know, reserved for powers and har. So that's four or five. So if it gives you 10, that's the whole lot. That's what's available today. So this, this planning board unfortunately can't can't turn a blind eye to that. We have to look at that, but you're absolutely right. It is, I'm only asking to see if he has mentioned it to you. Because you're absolutely right. It's a code enforcement issue.
Um, he hasn't, but there are more than 15 spaces in the front excluding those reserved spots from the parking map that, that I've provided in the previous meetings.
It might, you may be right. I think they might not have numbered the powers and har ones in the site plan.
No, they weren't. They were not marked in that. So.
So it's 20, so it's roughly 20.
Yeah. And I mean, my whole thing is that, you know, the reason why I chose this location is because the, the people that are going to be using this space most of the time are in walkable distance. It's geared, the entire programming in the afternoon is geared towards kids, middle school and high school that are coming from Howding. And the size of classes, my maximum class size in the afternoon is eight. In the morning, it will likely be 10, if that even, even if I get that many. And those classes don't start till 9:30. So where you're seeing, if there's a traffic issue, you're seeing that in an earlier part of the morning with commuters popping into Dunkin' Donuts or Main Course. And then in the afternoon, most of it is walkable and the, there's not as much traffic.
No, I, I appreciate that, but the, the reality of it is kind of the harsh reality sometimes is the planning board is just bound by the code. Right? We have calculations and formulas that we have to do and we have to work within the code, even when we see the limitations of the code. And we say, well, what if a bunch of these people are going to walk? What if, you know, what if people come off the train, you know, for hotels or whatever? It, it, it is, it, it, that's more of a legislative action to get the code to understand that. Right now, the current condition of the code basically says, you know, the parking spaces are calculated in a certain way. Right? So in this case, and I think the larger, the larger demand would likely be the, would likely be when you rent it out as an event space, right? You know, I would certainly sounds like it would be larger than your classes, but no, to be clear, it is absolutely not your job. My only question was whether or not the landlord had mentioned that he's going to open up. So the 32 doesn't include those five spaces either. They're not numbered.
That's.
So, so it's just, you know, he's got more than half of the site that, that cannot be parked. Right? So the planning board can't turn a blind eye to that.
I don't think that's correct though, because he has all the front and along the side, which he can open up. He just, because it's not currently used, he has a tractor there, but that entire alley is.
Like you, like you just said, he can open up. He has not opened that up.
Right. Because there hasn't been a, I mean, because he just has a.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm not sure what he's told you, but the challenge has been, and he's, I, I get what his challenge is, is people use it as a, as a pass through. They use it as a road. And so he put the tractor there because that's his way of saying, I don't agree with that. That's not a legal way to do it. I brought that up to the code enforcement office several times. I guess we can bring it up to the next one. But Lara and Sue were both on, on the board when we looked at that application and he's kind of managed his own. You know, but this is, you know, not really for this, you know, for this discussion, but my only question was whether or not he had made assurances to you, because if you look at it. Let me see really quick. You know. Karen, can I share a screen?
While we're pulling up the screen, um, oh, there it started.
Yeah. So these five aren't really, aren't numbered. In the site plan, he's got this block, the tractors back here. So all these spaces back here, none of them are accessible between, you know, equipment that he's working on or, or storing or whatever. So it's basically just the front. So it is, it is, I can assure you, because this is what we do. It's about half of the site. But that's a, but that's a question that the planning board will can figure out with, you know, with code enforcement. Because if you look, obviously, when we look at the, at the site plan. I think that's.
I'm counting 23, Matt. I don't know. On, on this side of the obstruction.
Well, don't forget the, so the, again, the planning board is just kind of bound by the code and the, the plant, the filed site plan isn't counting those, right?
Well, I, I, I don't know. I'm, what I'm saying is that the existing parking spaces are sufficient, the, the board felt were sufficient based on the fact that there is no formula for determining for this use other than a subjective determination on the part of the board as to whether to approve this as sufficient or not. And the board felt that with these parking spaces, that there were sufficient parking spaces for a use for this particular use. So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not following. So you're saying that the, that the 10 in the lease?
No, no, the 10 in the lease are simply dedicated ones. All right. But, but people attending classes here can use any of the parking spaces available. So it's not limited to the 10. It's just that in, in the discussions in our initial discussions here. Catherine decided it would make sense to go to the grasses and in her lease, get it, get 10 spaces dedicated specifically to, to this particular use, but the rest of the spaces are available for parking for anyone who comes in for, for her classes.
That's the discussion we're having is that they're not available.
Why not?
Well, you just looked at the condition. So the, the five here, you know, in front of the design studio are not part of the count. It's important to understand that this is an approved site plan signed off by the planning board. Right?
Right.
So this is the approved existing condition, right? That they are legally allowed. So, but if you look, there are 15 spaces in the front. Some of these, the lines are gone, but I guess you could still count them. And then the tractor kind of starts here.
I, I don't think that we can do this by kind of, I, I think, I think we have to.
Well, then I'm asking how you're doing it then, because i- i- if it's not kind of, then what are you, what are you looking at? Because y- you can't count any of these.
Why not?
I, I stood in the parking lot and I counted the spaces in the front up to the tractor. And the line goes from, you have the eight across, then you have 15, 16. I counted 20, I believe. I can't see with my glasses.
Well, that sounds about right, because the, the five over here aren't in, aren't numbered, right?
If you look at the numbers, there's eight by the street.
Agreed. No, I agreed. That's what I'd said. I said.
The building, and then there are five along the side as well, because people park there, whether there's lines or not, people park there all the time. And there you, there are five spaces leading up to that tractor. So I think what, because when I went down to the, to find out what the code calculation, as you said, were, were bound by the code, but there is no code for this. And so I think that was what Jack also researched and we discussed when I was checking, because I thought that I needed a formula that it says that it's the purview of the board to decide. It's not a, there is no formula for this. So that was what I think, if I'm not misreading or saying words for that, that our last meeting, it was decided that with those 20 a some, maybe even more spaces that are available currently, as is if you went out there and counted tomorrow, was enough for my purpose.
The other thing I just want to point out, I was just checking the parking table from last time. I believe the total occupancy for the studio assembly space was 20. Is that correct? And then is it the other spaces that add the eight or am I mistaken? In, in the table that I have, I'm not sure if it's the most recent. It was from, it was from the June 23rd email prior to that meeting. So that parking table has a square footage, delineated square footage of the studio assembly space, commercial, commercial amusement space as a 1,036 square feet. And then it has a total occupancy of 20. And then the code requirement, because it's other, there is no formula. It's not like in the retail and the back of house storage space. So that is where the board determination comes in. And, you know, I think there's, I think maybe Katie, what you're saying is, is based on sort of the, the parking spots on the ground, you know, affected as they may be by the, the tractor obstruction as well as the, what we, what was spoken about in terms of the actual occupancy versus the like total maximum occupancy. The 10 designated spots plus the other, how many did you say that you observed 20 total? Usable spaces? Yeah. Plus the 20. So, so in all in all, it seemed sufficient because there were 10 designated. And that's kind of parallel to about a class size. And then there, there was this other, these other 10 spots. Now, I think what Matt, you're pointing out is that maybe the 10 spots that are physically visible are maybe not marked on the plan. So is that, are we, do you think it would, just to move the conversation forward, would it make sense to make sure that they're all marked on the plan? Or can we approve the plan with, with proper marking, sort of like an as-built marking or something? I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, well, you'd certainly, yeah, I mean, to have a good site plan, it has to, it has to obviously def, it actually has to demonstrate the, the existing approved condition, right? So I don't know if the powers and har spaces transferred to the interior designer or, because the signs are still up for powers and hars. So I don't know what the condition, you know, what the status of those spaces are. But yes, if you're going to have designated parking, you would typically in a lease have a parking exhibit to show exactly where those spaces are. And the planning board would want to file that to then understand, you know, it's funny. We want to count those five, but yet we don't want to count those five because of powers and har. So I'm not, we have, you know, I mean, you know, and whether or not they went to the designer. So it, it, you know, the, the planning board can't really turn, in, in my opinion, the planning board can't turn a blind eye to a, you know, a landlord, you know, over promising parking, right? Or, or double, double promising parking. Because what we're saying is if the 20 were sufficient, that's the whole available number of spots today, right? You know, assuming the tractor weren't moved. And again, that's our, that's, that's the village's issue with respect, with respect to code enforcement and conformance to the site plan, the approved site plan on file. So.
Those, those sites, those parking spaces behind the tractor are available. You have to come in from the back, but they are available.
That's true.
They're not, they're not restricted. They're not completely restricted. So that someone coming to the studio has access to those, to those parking spaces.
Or Marion Ave?
Yeah.
The tractor needs to be removed. Yes.
That's another issue. We may want the tractor removed, but whether there is sufficient parking for the purposes of this application is the issue that's before us. And.
So, so what, what, what discussion has there been on that? Because column D in the parking table other is not, is not filled out yet, right? So what are?
What do you?
The code requirement for the, for the space.
For this use, there is no code requirement.
But I think what Matt's saying.
But the planning board has to fill that in.
We should determine what the requirement is and we can do that.
You mean there needs to be a number there?
Um, I think we can just determine what it is and then ask, you know, we need to determine what it is and then mark it as such. So that it's clear. And so it's, so that the approval is bound by, by the number that we've determined. And I think we've determined that, well, I think we've determined that there are 20, that, that there needs to be 20 spots, 10 designated spots, 10 flex spots are more than sufficient for the use that based on our conversations and understanding of last time. So if we, I, I might be wrong. So correct me if I'm wrong, because I know I came to that meeting a little late, but.
No, that was the discussion.
Okay. So if, if, so if, if that's it, we just need to mark, we just need to mark the table, right? Like, can we, can we say that? Can we sort of say that we need to just adjust the table to reflect properly the determination by the board, which is 10 for this other use, it's 10 does it, we accept, or we think that we've made a determination that 10 designated spots plus 10 flexible spots are more than sufficient for this total occupancy of 20. That's assuming that there's, you know, that's assuming that each individual occupant is coming in, in the one car, which is, which is a conservative, right? Like that, that's probably as, as was discussed, not going to happen, but let's just assume that's a worst case scenario. That doesn't account for the, for other spaces. So really it's 24 spots. But there is more than 20 spots there, right? Like with, with the 10 flex spots and then you probably have, you were saying, how many Katie, did you say that you observed on there?
Oh, just in the front, along the street and then in front, right in front of 37 and Main Course, and then along the side are 20 spaces that you can fit currently. Um, you know, I, I had just.
Can I just interrupt you for one second? Does that, that includes the powers and har?
It does not.
It does not.
No, no.
So you have 25?
No, 20.
20.
Yeah. Not including the, those other spots. Those are not available. Yeah. So in that, that parking map that is shown, it's this along the street in front of my business and main course, and then along the side that have the angled parking. There are 20 spots.
So then that does not include the spots that are behind the tractor on Marion Avenue. Correct?
Correct. And I, I had, because that, that you're, you are correct, Jack, that you can park there. That was what I had discussed with the grasses as having designated for, for me. Just because they, they said they would give me any spots, but because that was there and it's available and you can park there, it's accessible. That would likely be the 10 designated spots that I would, that I would have is behind, in, you know, along that, behind the tractor.
Gotcha. So there's those 10 designated plus 20 flex spaces.
Yes.
Okay. So I guess the question is, is there a way to mark the plan so that it accurately reflects those 20 spots in the front and the 10 spaces along that? Let's call it the current tractor parking, maybe not future tractor parking line, like, can we mark, can we, can we sort of say like, on the assumption that those 10 spots are designated along that, along that wall and that there is access, you just have to come around the back. That's fine. And that the, there are 20 flex spaces in the front, we, we would find that sufficient as a planning board for this use because it exceeds the total occupancy of the studio assembly space, which is 20 plus the four, or well, plus the four spots that are required according to the code for the retail space and the back of house, storage office space.
But that doesn't change the existing plan. That is what's on the existing plan, except.
Can we pull the plan? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Except for the 10 designated ones. Okay. That, that is exact, that is essentially the status quo.
What the plan shows. Okay. So the 20 are in the front and then the, the 10 are behind the tractor in the back. I'm, I, I, I don't think it changes. I agree that it, I don't think it changes the plan. I think maybe what would be helpful is to sort of mark them on the plan. And can we just sort of, a- again, yeah, I'm just saying, can we sort of go through the conversation as though that is assumed that it will be marked as, as it's, as it exists. So that it's kind of like document. I think the, I think what, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what you're concerned is, is that if a document is not, if a document that is used for this site approval is not accurate as to what exists on the ground, then we can get ourselves in trouble. So that's where this is, which is coming from. And I don't think it's coming from a place of, we don't want to prove that, you know, like, I don't think there's any, it's just like, we want to make sure that every, all the Ts are crossed and the dots are.
All that's, all that survives in most transactions are the documents, right? Assume we're not here tomorrow. Right? So that's why I like Lara's plan and knowing Lara, as I do, I suspect that what she also understands is putting them along the side there will then force the landlord to come into compliance, right? And will, and will leave sufficient overflow parking in front for things like main course and the, and the quick in and out, the short trip traffic. Right? Because obviously Lara knows how people use space. So I think, I think it's smart to say, you know, take them, you know, in the plan, they are 14 through 24, right? You know, or, or one less. But if you were to make those, the spaces, it's actually, I, I think that makes a lot of sense. It, it first of all forces the landlord to come into compliance with their site. It puts the long trip parking in the least, in, in, in the least busy section of the spot, of the site, right? And then hopefully then these in the back, which are all, I, I'm not sure any of these are accessible at the bottom of the drawing. You guys are seeing the filed site plan, right? Yes. So, so I think these are.
Those are not.
Yeah, there, you know, there's just equipment all over them. So.
That's right.
But yeah, I mean, yeah, to Lara's point, yeah, the, the only thing that's going to survive is the document. So we have to kind of show what we're approving. The, the, the question here tonight though, is that it, the landlord needs to agree to this, right? Typically in a lease, when you get, you know, when you get your designated parking, you get an exhibit to say where you're getting it. You know, because obviously the landlord could be, you know, designating the same spots to, you know, all the, every different, you know, three or four tenants. Right? You know, no different than like powers and har, got it designated and got signs put up, right?
Can I ask a question, Katie? When the landlord says 10 designated parking, did he tell you exactly which 10?
Yes. So he was giving me the 10 along the alley that's behind the tractor, which
Okay.
He, we agreed that the tractor doesn't need to be moved. I don't know if that's something that, I mean, for my purpose, it doesn't need to be moved because you can access that parking from the, the street behind and it's completely open and perfectly safe and you can walk to the building. So unless that's some, another issue, I don't, that doesn't affect me in any way, but those are the 10 designated spots. Pop, part, powers and har, I, they're not, they don't exist, they're not even in the building anymore. So those are just marked, those are pre-existing, but they're not used. I don't, I just, the only thing I know is that those aren't actually parking spots for anyone. They're just pre-existing posts that were there when that, that business occupied that spot, but no one uses those spots currently. And they're not included in any number. That's why it's not marked on this map.
So there are, there are 11 spots on this side. So it's almost the full, it's almost the full alley, you know, by Futown, the shared lot line with Futown. And the tractor is, you know, is up here somewhere. So there, there couldn't possibly be 10 without the tractor interfering with them. But we're missing an important point here is that this is one way, right? And it goes this way and it's nose in. So the, the assumption is that you're coming in the site here and you're, and you're nosing in here. This is already approved. It's already on the site plan as one way. So no, you can't, you cannot say that you can come in here and use those spaces. I, you know, you're going the wrong way on a one-way and you're backing in, right? And then to leave, you're going the wrong way on a one-way. So I do not agree that those are accessible. I do not agree that they are usable.
Okay. So if he removes the tractor though, they're usable.
Yeah.
Again, where I started, the tractor's got to be removed.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. No, you're right. I didn't realize it was one way. You're absolutely right. So yeah. So if the tractor's removed though, then they're accessible.
And, and again, Kate, this is not, I, we're just doing through the code. I, this is, you know, our job is to just kind of protect the village interests and the code and make sure that we put a site plan down, just like to Lara's point. The only thing that's going to survive is just this document. So if we're to say, oh yeah, you're driving the wrong way on a one-way street to go access some spots that are lined to the opposite direction, we're not really helping the village, right? You know, I mean, so, so I think.
All right. I, I just looking at alternatives, he could change the orientation of those, could he not?
I don't see, I don't, I don't know who, I don't know who required it to be one way, but I think if you change the striping, I don't see why it would matter.
This isn't a map street, correct?
No, no, no. It's private. It's private. But, but no, but you, but like, you know, the planning board does look at traffic flow. The planning board will often engage a traffic consultant to say, this needs to be one way to be safe. I will tell you that arrow is, is the indication as to why that tractor is there, because people were cutting through to go to Marion Avenue. Right? I get his frustration, right? I absolutely do. It's just, that's not the solution. But we haven't done much to correct that. So, you know, shame on us, I guess.
So could we say that the, that we approve this, we, we would approve this application as long as, you know, can we put a caveat in there just so that to move?
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like Katie's telling us that he's, he's already giving her these 10, right? There are 11 here, but you know, 10 out of these 11. That sounds great. You also just got new lighting. The bank just put lighting in over them. It looks great. You know, so the landlord can kind of clean up the site. So I think that's fine. So the board feels that it's 10 plus 10, right? The board feels, because again, an empty parking table makes me a little nervous. Again, that the only thing that survives is the document, right? But if, if the board feels that it's 20 for 20, I think that makes a lot of sense. You know, and when you look at the maximum parking available on the site, you've got 38 spaces. So you have the, the largest landholder, right? The largest volume taking, you know, not even half of the parking, right? Or about half of the parking. So it sounds about right, right? I mean, it sounds fine, right? But what, what that requires is frankly, Louis, to clean up the site and take the parking available. So there really are 38 spaces. Right? And that, you know, that, that Katie's, that Katie's customers can safely enter and exit the site. Right? You know, and yeah, I don't, I don't see any reason, I don't know, we wouldn't need a traffic consult. I'm sure there was no traffic consultant on this. Yeah. If you can, if you want to reverse that arrow, although the, I think the landlord would have to file a site plan amendment. Right? I don't, we don't.
I'm just thinking about possibilities. He did, he did say to Catherine that he was willing to move the traffic, the, the tractor in order to get this done. So.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
So I think that's the path forward. Right? We just say approved, approved. And as long as it's actually.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Catherine, but that's.
Yes. No, he did say that. I mean.
I, I had thought when I had asked you, he hadn't said that.
He said, he, he said he would move the tractor. I mean, I think at, to your point, it's used people speed through. And Kevin's been, you know, almost clocked, you know, half a dozen times when that was.
That's a very weird orientation, that door to that traffic. It's.
Yeah. So that's why I put it there. He didn't put, you know, it's a safety, it, it, it hasn't been necessary to have the, that alley open for parking. So it's been closed off mainly for safety purposes. So in that regard, you know, I, I, I didn't see, but of course he said, if we need to move it, we'll move it, but it's, it's just, it's dangerous. You know, people come in and out of Kevin's side door kitchen and you can't even see that door, not, not even just the main entrance. And people zoom through when it was available to pass through.
Can we make like a recommendation? I don't know if this is within our purview, but could we make a recommendation for signage? I feel like most people would respect a sign that says, you know, slow down as you park or something. I don't know. There's got to be a sign that could help solve this. Maybe two signs in two different spots, just to really, I don't know if this is again, within, within the purview of our approval of the application, but that's what I would, I feel like signage and weight finding are underrated and they can make a big difference. But I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, I, it may be that if the site is used more and those spaces are occupied, they'll act as traffic calming. Right? I don't, I mean, I'm not, obviously I'm not a traffic, you know, expert. That's a science all on its own. So, and I would be reticent to say, to put a sign up without having an expert tell us where it goes and what it does, you know?
Yeah.
Cause then it's really just based on our knowledge. Yeah. Without question, there's a common sense, you know, logic to putting it up there. And it couldn't hurt. I think certainly signage, just like the, the powers and har signs, whoever they're reserved for, because regardless of whether or not it says power and har, they say reserved, right? So you would feel you're not going to park there unless you understood, you know, you're certainly not going to powers and har, but you know, they do say reserved. So you know, I think the same.
Those are owners.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the same thing, it should be reserved for, you know, for move, right? Yeah. So the same thing, it should be reserved for, you know, for move, right? You know, that you could just, he could just, well, he's got to get, I'm sure, I don't see why Sarukas would mind to just put it on the building. Oh, but, oh, but the other ones, you're in there to be on a post.
Yeah.
And people pass through there. I mean, maybe he would just paint it. He might just have to paint, paint them on this, on the blacktop.
I, I think if you're going to calm there and it's private property, the best thing to do is just put a speed bump, a, a, a low bump.
Yeah. Yeah. You could do that too. And I think the signage for the reserve should, it should be on the, on the blacktop because you don't have enough. And then you got to get coordination from another landowner to put something on their property and we can't commit somebody else, you know, in your application. So.
That's right. I think we need to stay within his property line if we're going to recommend anything. Which I'm not, but yeah, I don't think we want to involve another property.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks. Thanks for working through all that.
Okay. Any other questions?
So just, I guess just to clarify, we'll just, any sort of approval if as, as this moves forward, would just, we just need to, who's responsible for adjusting the number of required parking spaces on that parking table? Will Katie do that? Or should we do that? Should we mark it up for her?
It should be the applicant giving it to the, and, and you can do the resolution subject to a parking table that says X, right?
Okay. So when we do the resolution to approve or to move forward, we would just say subject to adjusting the table as such. Okay.
And it sounds like the board's sense is that the, the use requires 20 spaces. Is that correct? Where are they following the site plan is separate.
That's right. Yeah. Well, that was the sense of the board after the discussion of the last. Sue, do you have comments or questions?
The, the only question I asked is already answered. I, I think based on our discussions at previous meeting, there was a, I think the feeling was that the parking should be enough with the floating one and with the designated one, especially the operating hours for the studio or for, for this venue. It does not put extra burden for the morning traffic. I think that was basically explained to us and then we agreed on that. That's, the only question is already answered for me. So, um, I don't have any further questions.
Okay. Thank you. I have one comment, Catherine, and that is in looking over the the environmental, the short form for the environmental statement, you've got the box that indicates whether the, the properties within historic district do have that checked. No, and that needs to be changed to a yes. The building itself is within historic district. Now I, the, the building's inspector doesn't feel that this action warrants a, a referral to HDRB. And I checked with HDRB about it as well. And, and that was their sense. They did say that the, any signage that would be under their purview would need to go to them. But from our discussions, that all the signage is on the interior of the building and so would not be on their purview. And, and, and that can confirm, I think at the meeting before last, that that this would probably be the outcome of this discussion, but it does need to be changed environmental form.
Okay. Was that the initial applic- part of the initial application?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make sure I make that correction and give that. And do I just resubmit that to Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And so are there any comments for, any public visitors who want to add anything more? No. What's the sense of the board in terms of closing this public hearing tonight? Or, and, or extending it unto the next meeting, which is sometimes done, but not all.
Before we get into that, can I add another comment? Is the, the landlord for this, is, this is not the first time that we deal with that piece of parking. Last time, well, we were not dealing specifically with the parking when we were discussing the, the bank changing the lights and so on. But that certainly came during our conversation. So I would suggest that somebody, either our board or the village or somebody talk to the landlord there to make sure that it, it, it is safe for people to, to park there. And, and, and he does not double or triple a promise to other people as designated parking and not, not available for real parking. I, you know, somewhere, somebody need to say clearly to him that, that part, you know, it's, it's his private property, but it does impose a, a problem, especially with all the tractors parked there or the, or the bike rack there or something. He has his point, but he still has to make it available and, and safe if he rents that part out to, to other people. That's, that's my comment. I don't know who is responsible for talking to him, but I would like to see that happens. So, so it's safer for everybody who goes through there.
I'm happy to speak with him. I don't know if we can bind him to anything other than the normal requirements of public safety. I don't, you know, the only other business on that site is for the antique place, which is only open, what, three days a week? And it's not, it's the interior design.
And main course.
And main course, as I'm saying. So, and main course is not a business that requires dedicated parking per se. It's short, you know, coming in and out. So I don't, I don't. From my perspective, that issue of his sort of overpromising to tenants and what, there, there are no tenants to be had, basically. Okay.
But to Sue's point, the, the bike rack takes up, I think, two spaces and that's on his property. So I guess it has to go.
It's, is that his bike rack?
I don't know, but it's on his property. I assume it is. It's on his property.
It's there. It has been there for, for forever, you know, but it, we, we, we kind of looked at it last time when we were talking about the bank lighting. And his stuff is all over the place along there. This is, this is not the photo that we saw, but when we were looking at the bank thing, you actually see the tractors, the back, the, the back there. Oh, maybe that, the rack is still there.
The tractor, the tractors right here and the rack is right, right by the bank.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
But no, you're right. That, Jack, you're right. That's a, it, it's basically just, you know, a note to Greg and just say, listen, we're, we're reviewing the application. You got to get this, this property owner to come into performance with their site plan.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. I don't think it's our purview. It's definitely just.
Yeah. No, no, no. We don't do enforcement.
Right. All right. All right. Then the conversation will be had with Greg about addressing that issue.
Very good.
Okay. So now what, what's the feeling of the, of the board about closing or keeping this public hearing?
I think we can close it.
Agreed.
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 As well as comment, the hearing and the comment. I don't, I mean, it's noticed. It's not, you know, terribly intrusive use. So I don't, I think it's fine to close it both.
Okay. So we need a, a resolution to close, close the public hearing. So if I can have a resolution from.
Motion to close both the public hearing and the public comment section of this hearing.
Thank you, Matt. And the second please. From Lara.
Okay.
Do we need to do a roll call vote on closing of the public hearing?
No, just on the resolution.
Okay. So all those in favor of closing the public hearing in comment?
I.
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 It's unanimous. Thank you. And now moving to the resolution. May I have a resolution then that with the provisos that have been mentioned, that the parking table be amended to show 20 spots in total, 10 of them dedicated as sufficient for this application. And I think that was the only proviso, correct?
And that, and that the spaces are, are marked as dedicate, the 10 are marked as dedicated to the tenant's name.
Okay. And with that second proviso, may we have a resolution to approve this application? Pending also hearing back from the county with delayed responding to, you know, what we sent over in the applications and over to them.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Matt. All in favor? Oh, here we do need a, a, a roll call. Okay.
Okay. Okay. Member Eldon? Here, present.
I.
Oh. I, I approve. Roll and then approving.
I approve it, but I'm not here.
Exactly. You are, you are correct. You need to be here to approve it.
I'm here.
Right. Thank you. Member Meyer. No. I. I. Member Francisco.
I.
Okay. And Chairman Goldstein.
I.
Okay.
All right. So Catherine, you understand what we're, what we will be expecting from you in terms of the amended parking table and the corrected, it's just that one correction on environmental review form. And we will follow up, the board will follow up tomorrow with the county to get their response, to try and get their comments back. Okay?
Great. And do I submit the amended parking table and the historic change to Jeff, both documents?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And I think that, you know, so the, the site plan, I think your documents, Jack, you, you want to include the old site plan and as an exhibit to show where these spaces are. Because as we know, most of them are gone. Many, well, the ones that are up along Food Town, there's no striping left and there's a bike rack and a, then obviously we all know about the tractor. So we're, I, I, I think maybe it, it, the resolution is predicated on that, you know, that this site plan exists and it's conforming, right? That the spaces that we are looking at, right? Are, are actually there. They're not there right now. So it's the landlord's responsibility. I'm sure Catherine can, you know, can impress upon the landlord. She has the most skin in the game to press upon the landlord. The site, you know, the, the, her spots need to be properly striped and marked as reserved. Cause a vast majority, I'm not sure hardly any of the striping is left on that side.
Well, yeah.
But again, that you can have that conversation with Greg as well, right? Cause that's part of the conformance.
I think that's where, I think that's where that comes.
Okay. Very good.
To be had. So we will do our, our, our best, Catherine, and you do your best and we wish you well, your new endeavor.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it and all the attention and, and thought into this. And it's been quite a learning experience. So thank you.
So we're sorry about that, but it's, it's kind of, it's kind of what we do. We, we are lost. We are lost in the details, but we are not the devil.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay.
Thank you, Kimberly. And I guess we lost Michelle, but thank you for, for attending. Tonight. Oh, you're welcome to stay. Four things of you. Okay. Now turning to Hudson Highlands, your trail, we all received, I think last night or early this morning, Yaslin's consolidation of the questions that we all submitted to her individually. And the purpose of the document is to, and I, 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 I think we all owe her a debt of thanks in.
Yeah. Wow. That's quite a, quite an effort she put in.
Yeah.
Footnotes and everything.
And everything. And it, and hot links, hyperlinks and.
Yeah.
But it's a very useful document, I think.
Very much so.
It organizes, I think, in the way that we wanted to, our varying concerns under certain specific headings. In my going over the, the document, I think that there are certain questions that we may want to reconsider, but there weren't many of them. And so I guess my question is, number one, we're scheduled for August 11th for their presentation to us. And I did say that they would be given these questions in advance two weeks before that meeting, which brings it to. Well, it brings it, I, I think we could probably, if we were to finalize our view of this document on our July 28th meeting, that, and then it were to go to Hudson Highlands, your trail. That would be it. I think it's almost exactly two weeks notice. And so from my perspective, and I, I'm just throwing this out there because no criticism whatsoever, yes, but you know, we received this last night. And so my, from my perspective, I think a good way to proceed would be for us as individuals to mark up the document and submit it back to Yaslin with comments so that, you know, this question could be moved or this question is not relevant, whatever, and ask her to go through a second process of consolidation and organizations, cause she herself had open questions as read in her notes. And that we plan to take up this discussion on the 28th and that we devote, you know, the time necessary to do it thoroughly.
I think that makes sense. I don't, I, I actually don't, I personally, you know, certainly not an attorney. But I, I, this is not really assembling the board with the purpose of conducting business, right? And taking action. We can't take action. We don't even have an application. Right. So in my opinion, what is perfectly fine to do through emails, the sharing of information, right? Which I think is all that the board is doing. So I, I don't have any issue personally with just, with doing it through email as much as we need to. Because it's going to be a lot cleaner and a lot faster. Like tonight, we don't even, we don't even have Yaslin as she wrote the document, right? You know, so we're at, we're at a disadvantage there, you know, as to, as to her structure and her thinking. Especially, you know, her opinion as it, as it relates to, as it dovetails with the code, right? So I don't, I, I mean, you can certainly check with John, but I don't, I certainly don't have any issue. I would not feel that I'm on the wrong side of OML by open meetings law, sorry. By, we're sharing information, but I take, we couldn't take action. We don't have an application.
No, exactly right. Exactly right. So Sue and Lara, does that make sense to you to go that way as well?
It, it does. Yes. I, I read through that. You know, she certainly did a, a lot, but it, the tidiness, it, it doesn't really matter if we present it to, to the, the trail people. I, I, reading through that, some of the questions may, they may answer us, but when we ask them. Some of the questions may they may answer us, but when we ask them to do a presentation, how much are they answering our questions? Or how willing are they to answer our questions? And are they going to make some slides or something just to fit into our presentation? I don't know. But I think it's a first step that at least we know we conveyed our opinion to them and give them a a chance to think along some other people's way instead of, you know, one track along their thinking. And then maybe they'll come back to us to say, look, we can't answer that question, or it's none of your business or whatever. But I think that certainly if we put our opinions, if we have any further comments and so on to Yaslin, and and she will spend more time to put it together, and then we will have to see how the other side respond to us. And as Matt said, we can't really do anything. But this is just as good citizens even that we we have questions.
No, I I I agree with that, Sue. I do think that there are certain questions in there that are amplifications of some of the slides that they have already done. And and so in responding to those questions, it wouldn't require the construction of a new slide, but it would require data, it would require answers coming back. But also in the questions regarding the relationships of the parties, I don't think that those are so complicated that they could that they couldn't put together a slide. So but it it is very unpredictable as to what product this will result in at this stage of things. But I think it is definitely a responsible track that the that the board is taking. And I think it is, and I was glad that she if justified is the right word, I don't know, but I'm I'm glad that she related the track to our given responsibilities under the code.
Yeah.
Yeah. Laura?
Yep.
You okay with all this?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll proceed that way. And I said that I would have a chat with, she was gonna Yaslin's gonna be back on.
Monday, she said.
Monday, I think. And she'll she'll look at this recording, but I also said that I would have the talk with her about the the next stage. So if we could, now that Matt, you're here, I believe we now have a quorum to approve the March 24th minutes.
I already sent comments. Those are the ones that were missing before. Oh, yeah, because it's because it's July. Yeah.
Yeah. And 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 we didn't have a quorum of the people who were there who actually sat through that meeting, but we do now tonight. So if we could have a a resolution, please, from the floor to approve the March 24th minutes.
A motion to approve the March 24th 22 meeting minutes as amended through the collective emails.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt. A second?
A second.
Thank you, Sue. All those.
I.
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 I. Thank you. And the the same, are you all comfortable with the minutes with approving the minutes tonight of the 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 June 23rd, was it?
That's the one I missed, right?
Yeah.
Well, abstain, obviously.
Yeah. But Sue and Lara, did you have a chance to review those minutes and are you okay with them?
Yes.
Yes.
And if I may have a motion to approve those minutes, please.
Second.
Okay, Lara, did you make motion?
Motion made. Going too fast.
And 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 Sue's second, and and if fall in favor of approving.
I.
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 So approved. Well, we are finally totally caught up in our minutes. So that's that's a relief. Just getting to quick comments. There is now, and maybe I there is now a subcommittee consisting of Eric Worth and Don McDonald and one other person who was on the Code Enforcement Committee, if it's named. It's suddenly gone out of my head. Anyway, they have been assigned and are now working on the the updating 134, the section 134. And we need to assign a liaison to that process because there will be aspects of it affecting our work. And so Matt, I was wondering whether you would be able to.
Do they? Do they need me to attend all the meetings or they just want, they just want somebody to bounce things off of? That's I did with the code up. Yeah. Yeah, like one thing tonight. Why in the world do we offer payment in lieu of parking waivers in the B2?
Yeah.
Right? It, you know, the site itself can provide parking. We had a site plan. I was afraid. I was really afraid. So much so, I didn't watch the video that you guys were talking about parking waivers, because I thought, oh, geez. It it's completely inconsistent with the with the introduction of the of, you know, so, yeah, so things like that. And it is good to have somebody that's kind of lived through all the, oh, the code just doesn't work, which is why we denied, you know, Two Depot Square parking waivers. Why we, why we denied 126 Main and Sue, I think, and Lara were there for both of those, at least one of them, certainly 126 Main. Because you're leveling the site, you can provide all the parking onsite. Park, you know, that the the point of parking waivers were things like, you know, the the existing condition means you could never do it, right? Because you're, you know, you're landlocked in the middle of Main Street. Yeah. So, yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay.
There were no, we we did not discuss anything about waivers and.
Thank God. Thank God.
Not at all. No, no.
Thought if the applicant's going to be unhappy with my other questions, that's going to be a very unpopular opinion, but it would be inconsistent. It would be, it would kind of put the village in jeopardy.
Yeah.
Because when we're, but again, those are the kind of things we're trying to clean up in the code or not, all these things that put us in jeopardy.
That's right. And when we were discussing it, it's a came out to say it's a multi-usage and so on, then it, you know, the requirement is different and so on. So we we stayed away from the waiver and.
Oh, thank God. You know, that's great. I was, I was kind of afraid I was going to, because I thought, oh, I really should have. I was about, of course, I totally jinxed myself when I said, I'm fine as long as I don't hit traffic. I was punch, I was punch listing a site which went on forever.
I figured that's what happened, yeah.
And then there was a multi-car pileup on 768. So bad that it was on both sides of the highway. People had like flipped over and crossed onto the other side. And this is the entrance to the Northway, you know, from up just above Albany. So I was sitting in traffic for an hour and a half. Totally jinxed myself. Although I doing much better than anybody in an accident. My problems are minor.
Yes. Traffic, there's, it's, it's really unpredictable, Stacey. You never know what happens.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
One final thing, I I attended the the Village Board meeting last night because I completely, completely zoned on pending in my report for June, which would do on Friday, so I had to give it in person last night. And at the end of the meeting, the trustees approved a request from the Fuhr Trail to support an application for a consolidated grant. The purpose of which was not made terribly clear, both because it was just not articulated, but also because the quality of the audio coming from Village Hall was just plain awful.
Oh, yeah, that.
Really is awful.
Yeah, no, it's not. It's not functional. Yeah.
You you simply cannot understand what anyone is saying. So I I didn't have time to do it today. I am going to try and review it once it's up on YouTube. Or just get a sense of what it was for. I believe it related to the use of Duchess Manor as the as a visitor center. And you know, I think one of my questions, Yaslin, was about property ownership and purposeful use.
But was the grant, was the grant to enjoin us, the the village in that, or why were they in front of the village talking?
They just said. Just asking for a letter of support.
Oh, just a letter of support.
From the village. Now, I don't know to whom the the application, I don't know what grant. You know.
Right, yeah.
But the source of it was, but, you know, immediately what went through my mind, and they did vote. The village voted to support.
So hopefully their audio was better.
Yeah.
They knew what they were voting on.
So, but of course, what goes through my mind is, of course, well, that is you know, tantamount to taking a position.
Yep.
And.
The ship sailed.
And I find it, if that is going to be a pattern. And I'm not, I'm trying not to overreact to this. I'm trying, you know, and to understand what it, the extent of, or the import of this brand. But, you know, the support of such things incrementally pretty much.
Indicate, indicates support.
Support. So I didn't know whether or not depending on I restrained myself from drafting a letter about it.
Well, I guess until you know what. But again, but again, you're right, the optics of it, and the message is one of support. Right? If you, if you have questions about whether or not a project should go forward or should go forward in its current form, you you're not yet ready to support. Right? If you do support, it certainly sounds to me like you understand everything and you are, in fact, in support.
Exactly.
Reasonable, reasonable assumption.
Exactly. And that's the way I would read it as a, that's just the way I would read it. That's the way I did read it. But I did want to let you know that it occurred, in case you all want, it's the very end of the meeting, in case you all want to check on the on the video of it. And then I'm I I'll see what I can find out and then report back to you.
Can we, can we request a letter, a copy of the letter? I certainly, we certainly can as residents, but I mean, just, well, no, let's not. If we want to do it, we do it individually.
Yeah. And 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 again, I'm trying. Well, all right, let's let's see what we can find out about it. But as a pattern, if it becomes an established, an established pattern of behavior, then the whole process of of critical judgment on this becomes moot at the level of the Village Hall and.
Right.
At something.
And when you look at the effort that Yaslin's already put in, let's make sure there's, we're doing it for some reason.
Exactly. That's exactly right. So anyway, on that note, if there are no further comments, then.
Motion to, motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Matt. And the second please. Laura and all in favor?
I have a good night.
You too. Night, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Don't feel bad, Karen. Happens to all of us.
It does.